Hey Chuck. Hopefully your connection's better. Hey Ed, thank you so much for attending.
No problem.
Your coworker goes on vacation a lot. Okay Craig, do we have anybody in the audience?
I don't think, oh. Sorry Danielle, I was getting to you, sorry. Yes, there's people in the audience, yes. And. And the board is all here.
Board's all here. So if we're all ready, let them all in.
They're in.
Is everybody in?
Everyone's in.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Laura Gwynnett Township Board of Supervisors. This is our regular meeting of September the 8th. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God.
Invisible, every.
Please be aware everyone that tonight's meeting is being recorded. And Carol, please make a note that we were in an executive session tonight for Personnel Matter. First up is the receipt of the minutes from August 25th. Any of the supervisors have any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is authorization to purchase the Welsh Road Pedestrian Bridge. Ed.
Yeah.
I hope you're set to fill us in a little bit. This has been an ongoing project for many, many years to try to get this bridge in place on Route 63 down by the Tennis Avenue intersection. Could you give us a little bit of background and explain the. The bridge?
Correct, so. The bridge is about 50 feet long, I think. We did get this quote from Contact. We've kind of been going back and forth for a while. So for $61,000, we were able to purchase the bridge of buttments and wing walls off of Coast Stars. And so we still need to go out to bid to find a contractor to install it, do some minor grading, and then do the trail installation. So. We hope to get it out to bid probably by the end of next week. I believe we already have authorization to go out to bid.
Yes you do.
Okay, and then. The reason. It kind of took a little while. We were trying to find contractors to be able to install it for under the bid threshold, but it just wasn't feasible, so. We were gonna try and do some of the work ourselves and then, you know, just get the contractor to install it for under the 21,000 threshold, but we couldn't get much budge on that and we're not able to find anybody. So we're just gonna go out to bid for the entire project, including the trail, and go from there.
Okay. The reason. Ed, is have you introduce yourself, who you work for and why you're here?
Sorry about that. I'm with Gilmore Associates, I'm stepping in for Jim Hirsch today. He's on vacation, so.
Gilmore, for those who don't know, is a township engineers.
Correct, sorry about that.
That's okay. So Ed, do you know how long this project's gonna take?
So. The longest part is the lead time for the bridge itself. That, the bridge won't be ready till the end of November, I believe. So once that's in place, I don't believe the actual project itself will take too long. The trail installation might take a little while, but the bridge setting itself, I would assume about a week or so to set the bridge. The trail could be another week or two.
So you're anticipating having this bridge in place before the year is out, is that correct?
Yes, potentially, yes. And then if we had to hold off on the trail, if it's too cold till the following spring, that's an option, I believe, but the bridge itself should be in by the end of the year, yes.
Now that's encouraging, it's taken a long time. So I'm gonna hold you to it, the bridge is gonna be in place. I wanna walk that path for sure in January of the new year. Okay. Is there any questions from any of the supervisors?
Could you describe exactly where the bridge is gonna be installed?
So the bridge is, I forget the street name.
It's in between Landfair and Lloyd on Welsh Road. It's on, the bridge is actually on a property that we own that North Wales Water has a, I don't know, pump station or a brick station out there. We're gonna go over the creek there and then the. Trail will go along Welsh Road and connect Landfair and Lloyd.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions from the supervisors? Okay, is there any questions from the audience? Craig, let me know if anybody raises their hand, please.
I'm not saying anything.
Okay. Alright, thank you Craig. Can I have a motion to authorize the purchase of the Welsh Road Pedestrian Bridge?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. For those of you that are in the audience, we have a change to the agenda. We're going to table the acceptance of the resignation of the tax collector and deputy tax collector. We're also gonna table the appointment of the intern tax collector. And I think, I believe, I need a motion to approve the appointment of a deputy tax collector. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, savit. Alright, the next thing we need to do is I need a motion to advertise for the position of tax collector. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there any member of the audience that have any questions about this?
Mark?
You got one? Leslie Katz is. Has ready.
Hi. So the deputy tax collector position that you are appointing, what role do they, approving, I'm sorry. What role do they play and for what period of time?
Well, as if, as long as we approve and the other authorities, that the school board and the county approve, then the deputy tax collector can then distribute the monies as they were paid for. As things stand right now, where the deputy can't do that because the deputy hasn't been approved by the various taxing authorities. So she's been appointed, but now has to be approved. So there'll be, as soon as that happens, there'll be no, there should be no interruption of the regular office of processes associated with the office of the tax collector.
Until which time we actually can appoint someone new?
That's correct, so we're just trying to make sure everything continues as it should.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mark.
Are there any more questions?
Yeah, we have another question from Deborah Schaefer.
Hi Deborah.
Hi, how's everybody doing?
We're doing well, thank you for attending.
Can you give us a little background as to why this is happening?
Sure. The tax collector has decided to resign. And as such, we have, there's a process, not a Laura Gwynnett process, but it's a state process that we have to go through in order to appoint a new one. Now, in the normal course of events, the deputy would take over, but the deputy in this particular case resigned. So the result of that is we have a new deputy that the tax collector has designated, so we can continue operations. So that's why we have to approve the appointment of the deputy tax collector, that the tax collector is so designated. That's just the process that we have to go through. And then once we approve it, then the school board does and then the county does.
Right, and who currently is the appointed deputy tax collector who needs to be approved?
Well, we've already approved Bernadette Doherty. So she is the, she's been working with our tax collector, Betty Lou, and she's got tax collection experience in Amherst. So she's quite experienced. So again, it's a deputy though, it's not the tax collector's position.
Okay, thank you very much for that explanation.
You're welcome. Craig, are there any more questions out there?
I'm. I'm not saying any.
Okay, thank you. That being the case, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is the authorization to advertise the budget meeting for October the 19th. Now Craig, why don't you explain to us why we have to have a budget meeting, so everybody understands it?
Well, we don't, I guess we don't have to have a budget meeting, but I think it would behoove everyone that we have a budget meeting. And in the past, we have met on a separate night, not on a regular board night, and we discuss, usually this meeting would be most of the capital and a broad brush about the operating budget for 2021. So I'm looking at, I think it's a Monday, Monday, October 19th as that day, or as that night. And what we'll do is we'll have the department heads in and myself, and we'll go, we'll discuss the, most of the capital stuff for 2021. That night.
Yeah, for those in the audience that don't know, I mean, these meetings sometimes are exciting as watching an actuary work. So.
Thank you Mark, thank you.
Yes, well, that's actually the goal, right? I like it when it's routine, when we understand what the budget is, that there's no surprises in it, but this process is where the supervisors get to look at the budget as prepared by our township staff. So we can understand and agree or disagree as to what kind of spending there's gonna be in the upcoming year. So the budget process, the staff has already really started the budget process, isn't that so Craig?
It is, we started about a month ago. So, and what this will do is give us an opportunity, it'll be a real rough draft budget that I'm showing you, and then we can move it around so that, you know, we'll be in front of you the first meeting in November with a full draft budget, but it won't be as rough as this one. And then you guys will have 30 days to look at that, and hopefully we get that approved, the first meeting in December.
Right.
So this'll give us time to adjust the numbers and ideas out there.
Right, so just be aware, this meeting is open to the public. So we've done these in the past and I don't know, I'm sure we must have had a member of the public attend, at least one of them. But it's a rough cut and you get to see what some of the supervisors think about the budget and what the staff has done for the coming years. So it's actually a North Star type of document as to what next year's gonna look like and how we're gonna operate.
Craig?
Yes?
Have you set a time for that meeting?
I did not, but you can.
Well, it can be announced at a later time. I mean, this is only August, so as we get close to it, we can come up with the time.
Yeah, it's September Ed, but that's okay, I understand. I'm still stuck in August too, I don't want summer.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Hey, well you know summer's over when we're talking about the budget.
Yeah, yeah, that's exciting stuff. So at any rate, is there any supervisors have any questions about the authorization of the meeting itself? I'll take that as a no. Are there any members of the public who have any questions about this process? And Craig, let me know.
Leslie, it looks like you have your.
Yes, a quick question, Mark, thank you very much. Is this a, once the budget's approved, do you have any other subsequent meetings throughout the year concerning the budget, the status of it?
Every month we do a year-to-date budget report.
Right.
Okay.
And then, in the capital, in this township is a little bit different than other townships, the budget usually, once it's accepted, the staff moves on with everything. As you just heard with the bridge that was just here, we go back to the board and reauthorize every capital purchase. So then it is approved, you know, back in November, December, and then again when we're about to purchase anything. So it's a working document that is in front of the board several times a year. And the year-to-date budget report that Chuck Wilson provides every month gives a clear picture of where we are within the budget.
As compared to what you approved for the budget?
Correct.
Yeah, and of course that could change, Leslie, as you know.
Okay, my concern is that I think this coming year is going to be incredibly volatile, and I just wanted to be sure that adjustments could, would be possibly to be made throughout the year. Because I know, we normally do that, but I think this year's gonna be kind of on the outside of it, so thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So if there's no more questions from the public, and I have a motion to advertise the budget meeting for October the 19th, 2020.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is a presentation. Presentation is from our township auditors, Barbara King Thornton and Company. And who do we have from the auditors present, Craig?
Mr. Gray, I do not see. Chuck, do you see? Steve, he asked to be on last, so, because he had a meeting prior to this and he thought he would be here by 7:30. It is now 7:19. Alright, so for instance, we could go to public comment?
Yeah, that's exactly right, so let's see if we can hold off on that. So the public comments are citizens' comments, concerns, or questions for any items that they care to discuss that may not have been on the agenda. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on anything?
Well. Of course, I'm saying nothing. Perhaps the chief could give us an update?
Well, I have a question. I do have a question for our assistant township manager. On my agenda for September the 8th, it says approval of proposed Act 101 violation as requested by the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission.
Yes, let me explain that Ed.
Go ahead.
We updated the agenda. Now, when I read that, I don't know if you had a chance to read that, but it's pretty detailed. And I wanted to make sure we had a conversation with Neil about the implications of the Act 101. So when I read through it, I didn't want to cookie cutter this. So I asked Craig to strike it from the meeting table, and he produced a new agenda, because this is something we have to look at very closely, because as you know, you know, it'll commit ourselves to certain courses of action. And are you still on the recycling committee up there Ed? Or you were former president?
I resigned after 25 years and and our assistant township manager, or assistant, has been filling in since, she lives up that way. So maybe, I'm sure you must have talked to her about it.
I talked to Craig about it after I read it, and I need to talk, we need to spend some time with Neil.
They just gave you an update, they did, Craig, they issued a revised version of what they had sent out previously today or late Friday. So we did, Craig did send that over to Neil this afternoon, so he'll have an opportunity to review it before it's back to the board.
Thanks Jamie.
Yep, so that's why there was a change Ed.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
So Craig, there were no public comments. Does, do you have anything to report on the manager's report, Craig?
I did not, I thought we would be listening to the audit and everyone would be delighted that I didn't have anything to report, so.
We're still delighted.
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Alright, well actually, the chief is on, I'm gonna put him on the spot a little bit. How are we doing, chief?
No report.
Okay?
We're doing good, we're doing good, everybody's doing good. You know, a few minor issues, but we've handled them. And moving forward, calls are still remaining pretty active. Seen more serious calls than we'd like to think, but things are going good. School is reopened for elementary schools. So our SRO is down at the elementary school. And middle school and high school, so you know, there are a lot of teachers and some special need kids, special needs children are attending school at middle school and high school. So we do have a lot of activities still going on at the high school. So that's keeping us busy there. Other than that, things are going really well. I agree, summer just flew right by us here.
Your department has everything you need from the board?
Yes, things are going really well. You know, it's hard not to ask for something, but I really don't have anything to ask for.
Okay.
Things are going pretty well and everybody's happy.
Alright, there's goodness there, thank you very much.
Yeah, we continue, I will add, you know, because it is, it's something I bring up every now and then, but it just hit us again this week, two email complaints. We continue to receive complaints about speeding throughout the entire township. There is not a road that I can't point to that I could tell you the resident that is emailing or calling. And I'm not saying that in a bad way, but it continues to be our number one complaint that is just so hard to handle, is speeding.
I have seen your trailers out in different, not the usual spots.
Yeah, and it's something I'm gonna bring up, I'll bring it up at the capital meeting. You know, we're gonna look at some of these temporary, the smaller signs that you can mount on different. You know, we had that presentation when Ship was gonna put, you know, some speed devices on McKean Road to just remind people constantly. But it's every road, and we're not alone. It's every township, every police chief meeting we go to, it's the same thing we all hear over and over of the constant speeding. And it's, as most, you know, not everybody's aware, we do not have radar. We are the only state in the country that does not allow municipal police departments the use of radar. So we have to go old school with timing devices, stopwatches, and putting lines in the road, and it takes two officers to do it. And it's very time consuming. It's very difficult to enforce speeding. On a routine, everyday basis, it's very difficult to actually have an impact. You know, it's easy to catch one person. It's not easy, you have to time them, you have to time them, or you have to follow them at the same speed with your car, so now we have two cars going 70 miles an hour. It's a very difficult process. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We try our best, we acknowledge everybody, we do try and have a presence, but it is, it is every, just about all four corners of the township, nobody's exempt. It's everywhere.
Chief, do you have an update from the school district in reference to the speed bumps on Houston Road between the middle school and the high school?
No, I don't. I did, when we talked, I did see the lines down there and I did not see Craig. I didn't see him last week, I asked him. I don't know if he has an update on that or not, but you know, when we talked last week, the school, I talked to the school, they didn't know anything about it, which I wouldn't expect them to. So I don't have an answer for you yet, and I didn't see Craig all week.
Yeah, well he was on, we let him go on vacation.
Yes.
So Paul, what's the best theory on this township-wide speeding phenomena?
I think, well, part of it is less traffic.
Right.
Increases speed. And we all see that, there is, you know.
You see Chad nodding his head.
Rush hour in the morning doesn't exist anymore. It's rush hour, because everybody's in a rush, but there's no, there's no backups, there's no, there's no waiting to pull out. Bethlehem Pike, it's amazing. And then, you know, of course, we have these, you know, Norristown Road is the latest one, where people, you know, the speed limit's 45, it's easy to go 60. You know, Summit Town Pike, there's no traffic, there's no school zones, we don't have the buses out. And people just see it as a, you know, pedal to the metal. Fortunately, or you know, however you wanna look at it, we're not seeing accidents, our accident numbers are not increasing. So that's a good thing, but you know, it's hard, it's hard to put a, my only explanation is there's no traffic.
Yeah, well it makes sense.
Okay, yeah, I would say, I would say when I drive around, there's not much traffic, so.
No, no, and we don't have the school buses right now. So you know, that really puts a, really slows traffic down, we don't have that out there. So we're doing everything we can, but we, you know, and you always hear, well, I guess somebody has to get hurt first, and that's not our approach. We try and approach it in a preventive manner. But at the same time, you know, when we see accidents happening, you know, Summit Town in Swedesford, when we realized we needed to put stop signs. 3963, where we had accidents, we installed a no turn on red sign. When we see trends of accidents, we know we have to address it. When we see trends of accidents, we know we have to address it and there's usually a way to do it. And we work with Chad, we work with other people. We're not seeing speed related accidents.
Right.
You know, it's frustrating for residents. You know, sometimes when you're trying to pull out, you know, Chesterfield, different areas where come, you know, people are coming around to Ben, they see everybody is flying. You know, yeah, you know, Plymouth Road and Gypsy Hill, we get the complaints. It's everywhere. It's, it's, we're not unique to any municipalities. Every police chief's nightmare is speeding, how to control it. It's very difficult.
Okay, chief, thank you for the update. At least there's not accidents. That's a.
No, exactly.
That's a good thing. That's a very good thing.
Yep.
This is kind of a good problem to have. The roads are half empty.
Yep.
Interesting what you, what we wish for, right?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Craig, could you introduce Steve for us?
Yes, Steve Cutu Flakis is here from Barbara Cane Thornton. He is our auditor and he's audited our books for a couple of years now. All right.
Yeah.
And we do have a presentation. Do you want to share your screen? You want me to share mine?
Sure, mine.
Okay. All right.
So is that working? Everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. So as Craig mentioned, we audited the township's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2019. Okay, there I am. Steve Fitzpatrick, a partner with Barbara Cane Thornton Company. So I oversaw the audits. This year we had a team of, including myself, we had three staff at the township working on the audit. So I oversaw all them. All right, so there's two reports that the township issued. The first one is, is the annual audit and financial report. Sometimes you hear that referred to as the DCD report. And that's the state, that's the, that's the report that only goes to states for the state filing. It's electronically filed. So that was done. We helped the township with that and we gave an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion in accordance with the state's reporting requirements. It's not a, it's not a gap report. It's how the state wants the data shown. And then there's a second report that's issued. It's called the basic statements, which it's more of a traditional financial statement that shows your, your, your balance and your income statement and your footnotes. And that was issued later. And we gave an unmodified opinion on that also. So basically that means we feel that it's fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as they apply to government landings. That's basically what that means. The standards that we followed were auditing standards generally accepted United States of America in the yellow book, government auditing standards. Under the second set of standard, that's where we really have to amp up our consideration, the internal controls township follows. And then if we were to see anything, you know, that we consider to be officious, we would cite it and then I didn't write it up. So from that standpoint, we, there were no significant efficiencies or internal controls that we, that we, that we noticed. Overall, we feel the controls in place are working and would catch material on the statements. We did have one management letter comment, which is not a finance, it's a, it's a separate letter, it's a recommendation. And it's just, years ago, we recommended that the township develop a written procedures manual that outlines all their accounting procedures. That's in a draft format, but it hasn't been finalized. So we're just continuing to recommend that, that get pushed to, you know, to the forefront and finalize. You know, as you know, like you said, four years ago, your financial director left suddenly year end, he had to bring Steve in. And at that point, there wasn't a lot of written procedures. So it sounds something like that in place is very helpful when you have transition in that, in that finance part of it. Our audit approach, basically, we do what's called a risk assessment. Our procedure is designed to target areas of greater risk. Generally, we start off by making inquiries of, you know, township supervisors, management and employees. We, we understand and document that townships can turn on controls. Areas where there's no controls or poor controls indicate areas that as an order, we have to, you know, look at it a little harder. Make sure things are okay. We do analytic procedures where we review historical trend data, looking at your current results versus your several, a couple of prior results. Your budget versus actual comparison of actual data versus known facts. Known facts, we pick them up by looking through the minutes, you know, contracts, agreements and so forth. And then that's that we do, we do the standup procedures. That's where we, you know, do confirmation with third parties of your revenues and your, your cash balances, your debt and start looking at invoices and so forth. It's kind of what the audit approach entails. Some of the results, you're in, the fund balance for the general fund this year decreased by $215,000. But that's after transfers were made to various funds. Get that in a little bit. Your capital reserve fund had increased the fund ownership of $379,000. Basically due to the transfers from the general fund and the revenues exceeding what the capital arena fund. Your open space and your traffic fund funds had fund balances of 1.1 and 588,000 as of the year respectively. Then you have a bunch of little smaller funds that get aggravated and the end of the year with a total fund balance of $711,000. Uh, some trends this year, the general fund sold a decrease in revenue of about 5, 500,000 and increasing expenses of $567,000. However, fund balance increased by $1.2 million before transfers. Transfers to share of $1.4 million were made to your capital reserve, your sinking fund, your fire protection and your recreation. So that's good. You're able to take that extra fund balance move to different spots. What can be used? Is your store and store reserve funds this year had an increase in, in net position, you're of $746,000. The revenues expenses were consistent from year to year. Revenue is about 3, 3.1 million versus 3 million year before and expenses of 2.3 versus 2.2 the year before is pretty consistent. When it gets to the funded savings of your pensions, you guys are in great shape. Your, your police pension was 102% funded as a 123119. The prior year was 82%. And then your non-uniform plan was 107% funded versus 95% the year before. So that's, that's good. And then finally, your net OPEB liabilities are the benefits you offer that are in addition to pensions. This year, as in your township quarter, a net OPEB liability of $285,000, year four is 674. The township does have no paid trust fund set aside where you, that you put money into. This year, contributions of $225,000 were put into that trust. And the end of the year was a, was a fund amount of $815,000. So that's the thing you'll see necessarily at other townships, at least the ones I audit that are having a trust set up and setting aside money to tackle that liability. Some, you know, townships have astronomically huge liabilities in the books, but not so much here. So it's good, um, it's good to hear tech on that. Just some other odd communication things that were required to mention. We did have one entry that management decided to pass on this past year. It wasn't material, so it was fine to pass on it. We did get cooperation from management and members of staff. This year we dealt with Chuck, he was new and prior couple of years with Steve. So between Chuck and the pandemic, we got through the audit. There were no disagreements with management. And then the draft reports were reviewed with management prior to his meeting tonight. And then we also did have a meeting, we could so go with, with elected auditors to review, review the statement reports also. So they were involved with the process. But that's a high level overview of the audit. If there's any questions, I'll take them.
I got a couple of questions for you, Steve. Can you go back to your OPEB slide?
Yeah.
Okay, could you explain to the audience what a OPEB liability is and why we have a fund for it?
Basically, with some townships and boroughs offer, you may pay for like healthcare benefits to retirees. So after somebody leaves employment at the township, then they need their, their healthcare benefits paid till age 65 or, you know, it, it, it varies. But basically that you, the liability is measured by natural, you get natural study done. And they basically, you know, come up with your total OPEB liability, it's other post employee benefit liabilities. And they'll say it's, you know, say it's $10 million. But if the township has $8 million set aside in a trust fund, that's your vocal, just like how your pensions are, where you can't pull the money out. And you can use those, so that's like funds to offset that liability in order to report the net amount in your statements. So that's how you get the, you know, net. So as a 123119, the township reported a net liability of $285,000. And then your trust, you had 815. So basically that means your OPEB liability total is about, you know, a little over a million bucks.
Okay, and how would you characterize our OPEB fund versus, you know, townships that you also do audit for? Are we, are we better? Are we about even? Are we worse?
Could you? Be honest, you're, you're much better, much better. First of all, you have a trust, you're setting aside money into the trust. That's not something you see every, every township. Some townships don't. See, there's, this, this liability is measured by that, but under the standards, there's, there's no, there's no obligation to fund that liability. So if you want, you can just let it sit in your books and grow and grow every year in this, you know. But you, you know, you guys are in good, in good shape compared to other, other townships. And from what I'm hearing from, you know, like from credit agencies, what I've been hearing is that they're not so much concerned that there's a liability out there. They, they understand that. It's like what they're looking for is to make sure that you're actually have a plan to tackle that liability. You're setting, setting funds aside. At least that's what I've heard from, you know, from credit rating agencies.
So that would, that could potentially act, uh, impact our credit rating for the township if you don't have one, right?
Right, yes.
So, okay.
Yeah. They like to see the, your plan, you're setting, you're setting money aside.
Right. And my next question would be on the pension, our funding liability. Could you go over that again briefly?
Basically what this means is, so as mentioned, your, your police pension fund was 102% funded as of end of the year and your non-uniform was 107% funded. And basically what it means is you're in a, you're in an asset position. So in your statements, you'll see a net pension asset instead of a liability. And basically what that means is that actually, like the liability that actually came up is less than the assets you have set aside in a trust to fund that liability. So you have more assets in the trust than what the liability actually is. And it has an end of the year.
And, and if you were to compare us to other sister townships, how would you characterize our pension?
Better shape than, than most of them.
So we're, we're in pretty good shape on the OPEB and, and the same goes for, for the pensions, right?
Yeah.
Does, does pension liability impact our credit score?
Yeah, it could if you're, yeah, it, it could if you're, if you're very underfunded. You know, it could be considered like the distressed plan or, you know, we don't. I'm not sure what the exact percentage is, but if you're only like 50% funded, I'm sure that would negatively impact your, your credit rating.
Do you have any idea how many townships like ours are, are, are distressed or moderately distressed in the state? I mean, I'm trying to figure out where we are in that scheme of things.
You're not, you know, we're near distressed. I know, I know the state, state auditors put out a report every year. I don't mind, there's, it's a, there's quite a, there's quite a few that are out there that are pretty poor shape. But you, I'd say your township's nowhere near, near that, not even.
So you give us, you gave us a clean bill of health is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I see the majority of my, majority of my mispoys are probably like in the 80, 90% funded, funded range.
So we exceeded that in a, in a good way.
Yeah, and it could fluctuate. I mean, a lot was driven by the market too, because there's underlying, you know, investments that are in the trust. Yes, if the market declines and, you know, could cause you to dip a little bit.
Right.
Sure, if you wouldn't measure this right, like, you know, two months after year end, you might not, probably weren't as good a shape. But market's kind of recovered a little bit recently.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, Steve, that's all the questions I have. Are there any questions for Steve from any of the supervisors?
Yes, I have an important one and he may not be able to recommend anything to us. But Steve, I'm proud of the, the track record of Lower Guinnett has that you have shown us to the public tonight. And it's not only the current board, but previous boards have done a lot of work to make sure that we're, we're funded in areas where we're required to be funded.
Right.
But do you have a recommendation with really concerns me and also our police department, our public works people, anybody covered under this pension program? Is if, in particular, the police, if the state of Pennsylvania decides that in, because of the lack of funding and proper pension programs that we have in other parts of the state, they do not have these funds. So consequently, I'm concerned that the state may try to take over all the pension funds of all the municipalities in Lower Guinnett so that they can fund and use our capital to fund where they do not have capital to fulfill their requirements. That's a major concern I have. And is there anything we can do to protect Lower Guinnett Township from who's ever in Harrisburg at any given time to come take our funds?
Yeah, but the funds, the funds are in a, they're in a trust. I don't know if legally if the state could even get at them. Yeah, that might be a question for your solicitor, but that's really generally the whole purpose of putting them in a trust. It says that you see, you see, with the township where they're, they're bankruptcy, they'd be, you know, protected.
Well, that's, that's a question then, uh, we'll have to pose to our solicitor to do some investigation on that. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think they would have, I don't think they could have, get access to your funds that are set aside in for the pension and the trust. I don't think they could get them, but, I mean, they couldn't, you know, I guess theoretically they couldn't stop giving you state aid down the road. That's one way they could, you know.
Yeah, they can withhold, they can withhold, uh, other funds coming to us.
Yes. Maybe, but I guess you're referring to this, well, this, the state pension system, that's like really in bad shape. Is that where you're going with this?
That's correct. That's correct.
It's underfunded by billions of dollars. Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
So I'll, I'll ask Neil or
Okay.
Solicitor to may do some research on that. But Steve, thanks for your comments and hopefully we don't get penalized for doing the job that the previous boards have done over the years.
Right. Yep.
Okay. So any other questions from any supervisors? Any questions from the staff? Or any questions from the public?
Leslie, I see you have a hand up.
Yes, please. Hi, Mark. Hi, Steve. Steve, could you share with the supervisors what you think are the biggest risks that this township has based on where we stand? Um, what they should be paying attention to or be concerned with?
Well, I guess with the whole, you know, whole pandemic, you know, I'm not sure. I, I haven't seen your, what your revenue streams look like in the new year. I don't know if you're, you know, if you have declined there, but I know like a lot of other mispoys are kind of putting, you know, large capital projects on hold and to kind of, until they know what's going to happen going forward. Here, you know, here the township has a pretty healthy general fund fund balance. And, you know, the township does have a policy, I think it's like anything over 35% of your running expenses for a year. You have to kind of go up a plan where to put that extra money. And that's partly, you know, what happened this past year when, you know, some extra fund balance was transferred from the, you know, you put like 900,000 went from the general fund to the capital progress fund. And you put money in your debt, debt service fund and your recreation fund and different, very, very, various funds for different purposes. So, I mean, I guess, you know, like I said, fortunately, the township business is pretty strong, is a good, strong financial position. But I would just say just to watch, I guess, is what your revenue streams and make sure, you know, if you see it, you know, decline, maybe, you know, it could be a red flag and.
Yeah.
On that.
And Leslie, we, we have cut back on some of the capital projects, right, Craig?
Yes, as we've talked about at the elected auditors meeting, yes, we, we slowed down on the capital projects. We've been watching expenses. We've been looking at the revenues and adjusting accordingly. So there was some capital projects we did not do and, you know, we'll, we'll get through this year and, and in the next few years. Yes, so.
Okay. I want to thank Steve and his team for doing a great job again for us.
Thank you.
Always do a good job.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And your, your team is definitely good to work with too, Craig. They, they're a big help.
Yep, Chuck, Chuck and Mary, I know, were very instrumental in getting you all the information you needed. And it was different this year. Obviously you weren't sitting in the back there, but, uh,
Yeah.
I know they, they did a lot of work scanning and getting you everything you needed. So I appreciate the work that they did to Chuck. I know Chuck's on the line here. Mary, Mary is not, but, uh, yeah, it was a good, good team effort.
Yep, agree.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Now that there's no other. Uh, now that there's, uh, no other business in front of the township, um, and if the supervisors would like to have a comment, um, before we leave, is there any thoughts or comments from the supervisors?
Yes, I have one concern and this is, um, Craig and Jamie are well aware of this and have been helping out. There have been some complaints about the, um, waste management folks coming into neighborhoods before 6:00 AM and causing quite a lot of noise and disturbing the residents. And, um, I know that both Jamie and Craig have followed up on this and I just wanted to ask if there were any updates to the situation.
I don't have any updates other than, uh, and I think I've explained it before that usually what happens is, uh, people are on vacation, a new driver comes in, a new, uh, a new route guy comes in and, you know, they, uh, they don't know all the rules in the township. So the, uh, the route manager has been with, uh, the different drivers that were out there the, in the past, uh, couple of months. And she claims he has it under control now. So Jamie, I don't know if you have any more.
I haven't gotten anything new since, um, my last message to you, Tessie, last week. I haven't, um, gotten any feedback from them since. Okay. But I appreciate your, uh, help on this matter. It seems like, um, it would be simple enough for waste management to inform all of their employees uh, in Lower Guinnett that we have a noise restriction and a contract. That should, uh, prevent them from coming into the neighborhoods too early in the morning. But, uh, we'll, we'll see if Jamie's last effort, uh, can pay off this time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any other members of the, the board, uh, would like to make a comment?
Yes, I do, uh, make the, I'd make a comment that, um, my fellow supervisors, I'm sure will second this, that, uh, our prayers and thoughts go to Betty Lou Yost, uh, who's, has a health problem. Uh, she has served this township for over 30 years and, uh, we, uh, our prayers and thoughts are, uh, with her and, uh, I just wanted to go on record to say that at a public meeting.
Thank you for that, Ed.
Um, I just wanted to echo what, what Ed's shared and to also say, um, I'm on different social media sites and I was very happy and pleased to see, and I'm not sure if Chief Kenny saw. Um, there was a long thread, probably 20, almost 30 messages of individuals, um, happy with the Lower Guinnett Police Department handling a situation with the individual who clearly had, uh, an episode related to mental health. Um, and they were appreciative and thankful of the police and kind of posted it to share, um, how respectful and, and how resourceful the police were. So I wanted to, you know, go on comment as saying that. I was very happy to see that and very proud of Lower Guinnett Police Department.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. Wow. Well, well, um, as, as is normally the case here, our staff is, uh, excellent. I, I know it's not always appreciated because the members of the public are, they, they have very high standards and they, they've come to expect uh, as much from everybody, uh, that works for the, uh, for the township, including especially the police. So it's always nice to hear, uh, some good news. And, and Lower Guinnett generally has, um, you know, a lot of people that feel that way. So, so there's goodness all the way around. Um, having said all of that, I'd like to thank everybody for attending. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.